Gentlemen, all set? Good evening. I'd like to call the Alton Board of Selectmen's Meeting, April 27, 2020, to order at 6:00 PM. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. And Chief, would you do the honors?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is that a light hat being on, Josh?
It's not on this time.
No.
Okay.
Before we get to the agenda, gentlemen, just want to read again. Still further notice to keep our members of staff safe, comply with the RS-891-A, the State of Emergency and Governance Orders Restrictions on Public Gatherings. The Town of Alton is moving from an in-person meeting to remote audio participation. To remotely attend the meetings, audio only, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. For telephone access and remote access instructions, list some of the news and announcements on the homepage, or telephone the Selectmen's Office, (603) 875-2113, (4603) 875-0229, between 8:00 AM and 2:40 PM, for the dialing code and the meeting ID for each Selectmen's Meeting. Gentlemen, at this time, ask for approval of the agenda.
Done.
I would...
Take a second.
To add packs.
To new business or old business?
Uh, probably new business.
Number three will be parks and rec. Rex. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to new, uh, old business. Uh, number five, harmony pack. Number six, Shipley's Dock. Any other amendment to the agenda?
Not now.
Okay, I am going to move old business in front of new business tonight because the police chief is here with us, so he doesn't have to stay through the whole part of the, um, new business. At this time, Chief, do you have an emergency management, uh, excuse me, any other discussion on the agenda amendments? No further discussion on Paul the Board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Ruben Whitworth, yes. All may affirm, the agenda passes as amended. At this time, I'd ask the Chief, he has any emergency updates he wants to give, emergency management updates?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, just take a minute to address the board and the public. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, um, every member of the community and the employees of the Town of Alton for their understanding and support during this time. Uh, you know, the decisions that we've had to look at and make, um, among the emergency management team in conjunction with, uh, members of the Board of Selectmen have been difficult, but it, they wouldn't have been carried out as well as they have been without the continued support of the community and the employees of the Town of Alton. So, I'm, on behalf of the emergency management team, I'd like to thank everybody for their support. Um, furthermore, right now, we're continuing with the implemented emergency, um, orders that have been put in place for the Town of Alton, um, restricting operations within public access to any town buildings, um, doing as much business as we can remotely to comply with the social distancing, uh, recommendations of the CDC, and also keeping the employees of Town of Alton as safe as possible. Uh, recently, you know, most of our, uh, protocols are remaining in effect, are still in effect. We haven't introduced a lot of new policies, but what we have been doing behind the scenes is sort of troubleshooting the ripple effect of what those orders have been put into place have caused. I mean, we've had to address, uh, different ways of conducting business that we weren't able to do, or we've had to figure out unique measures to take in order to do remote business. Um, another good example is there's been a lot of talk and a lot of conversation about the parking over in Mount Major. With the social distancing and people being, uh, confined at home, a lot of them are reaching out to outdoor activities and hiking become, is a, is a major, um, pastime for a lot of people, uh, during this time of, uh, social distancing and not being able to go out to their favorite restaurants or businesses. With that, Mount Major has taken on a lot of traffic and a lot of people, um, during the weekends and, uh, you know, nice days when the weather is nice out. We've, uh, worked with the state of New Hampshire, um, to shut down and limit the parking on the westbound lane, um, to help combat that. The eastbound lane is still open right now for some of the overflow parking and as you could probably, most of the people saw us last weekend, that's gotten to a little bit of an extreme, but we're still working to combat those issues. Uh, limiting the parking has also created some overflow parking issues throughout town. Uh, Jesus Valley Road, Alton Mountain Road, those are all topics that we've been addressing and, and working, uh, in conjunction with the board to try to, uh, come up with, with reasonable solutions for that. So, we're constantly meeting the emergency management team. I'd like to reassure, you know, the public that we are meeting still every Monday and Thursday, um, and during those meetings, we're taking up all of these issues that are being brought to either members of the team or members of the Board of Selection, uh, Selectmen for concern. And that's what we're spending our time addressing and trying to come up with a collaborative effort to solve or, or reduce these issues that are popping up. Uh, and we will continue to do that. Right now, we're seeing, um, statewide that, you know, the numbers are still increasing in New Hampshire. Unfortunately, we're still... So that means that most likely, you know, depending what the governor has to say on May 4th update, um, some of these restrictions will probably be continued further out into the month of May, um, to an undetermined time. Um, until we start to see a downswing in numbers, we can't begin to loosen the social distancing, um, parameters that we have in place right now to protect people. So we, we intend on keeping that going as long as the state, um, decides to continue with their sanctions statewide, we will comply as well on a local level in keeping those in place, um, moving forward. So, that's what we're continuing to do, where we're marching forward, addressing every issue that is brought to us, um, or observed by any members of the team or, or at those meetings, and, uh, we will continue to do so. Does any of the board have any questions for me?
I don't know. Seeing while we have you speaking, Chief, would you like to go over number three, old business, and number four, old business? Along with Route 11 Westbound Lane by Mount Major, park, park, no parking signage. Bay, no boat trailer parking signage, side park, clam shack. And three, Jesus Valley Road, no parking signage. You'd like to address that now, or you kind of mentioned it?
Sure.
And we could just, that's right, gentlemen, we'll just move to number three and number four on the old business now, while the Chief has already started talking about, so he doesn't have to repeat everything.
Sure.
So I turn over to you, Chief.
Thank you. So, like I started to mention, um, you know, we were starting to see a little bit of a ripple effect with, um, the, the pandemic and some of the sanctions that are put in place, and a lot of it has to do with parking in our outdoor recreation areas. So, um, one, Mount Major has taken on a lot of activity, and, uh, most of you have either seen it or seen pictures of it on social media and issues with the parking on both sides of Route 11. Mount Major, unfortunately, Mount Major's parking lot is not enough to sustain a busy day hiking there. It never was in the past. Unfortunately, that's multiplied during the pandemic time, um, that it's, we've, we've seen overflow both sides. So originally, we had shut down temporarily. I talked to DOT on emergency management level and said, "Look, we, we gotta do something to make this safer." Narrowing of the road, people crossing the road on highway is not safe. Um, they agreed with us. They weren't going to shut down the park. That's a decision at the governor's level that they decided they're not going to shut down Mount Major. Um, uh, but they were in agreeance with us to, to work to try to resolve this. So, um, our first steps were to restrict all of the eastbound lane. So the eastbound lane has a guard rail, pushes traffic out. Um, so we put temporary signs that you can see now. The state went out and put, um, delineator posts in the ground for us, and we attached no parking signs from Alton Police Department, um, all the way down that right-hand lane. And it has been, it has been followed, and we have not had one violation of those no parking, which I'm very pleased and very happy with, and that's what I'm talking about, the community support. Um, I, I have never posted that large of a stretched area and had it adhered to so well.
With that many vehicles.
Right. Unfortunately, uh, one of the things that's happened is everybody's gone to the eastbound side. We do have some guard rail parts around the scenic view in areas that makes it a little bit narrowing. So, originally, the recommendation, uh, DOT had said to us, you know, "We know this is a problem, and this has been a problem in the past. If we get a letter from the town requesting this to be permanent, we could put some, we could do some permanent signage in the areas where it makes it a little bit more dangerous." So my recommendation is that before this has happened and really opened the eyes of all the parties involved, we really hadn't, didn't have the buy-in from the state to combine with us to, to really put up some no parking and really post it, because it, it really just didn't seem to rise to a level of, of, of that big of concern at that point in time. It's all been highlighted now. So my recommendation would be that we, we take advantage of that. We do make the signage permanent on the eastbound lane. Um, and, I mean, excuse me, on the, on the westbound lane, all the way to the westbound lane, and then on the eastbound lane at the guard rail section that goes, that starts just before the scenic view and wraps around that current corner on the scenic view. Um, I did go out there with Todd after, uh, we had one of our emergency management meetings talking about the mile markers, to use those. Unfortunately, the mile markers were spread out a little far, and it was containing a lot of extra area that we really didn't need to include. So, as, um, delineation for the letter and, and talking to DOT, my recommendation was, is that on the westbound lane, we use from the scenic view all the way to 11D on the westbound lane. That'll shut that down in that entire area right there. And on the eastbound lane, we just use the terminology, the guard rail section just, um, east of the Mount Major parking lot, uh, continuing around the scenic view. And those are the key problem areas, um, that have really been pushing the traffic out and causing a lot of pedestrian traffic, uh, crossing Route 11. Um, so if, uh, so that would be my recommendation for the board to consider for permanent, um, parking, no parking signs, and then we could...
You add in there? Should we add in there to ask them to make that parking lot a little bigger?
Well, the state wouldn't make the parking lot in Virginia, New Hampshire Forest Society, Society of Forests would have to do that in the last one. Well, the state did that before they turned the property over to the New Hampshire Forest.
A few years ago, they went and did it.
That's what I mean. And as soon as they did it, they turned all that property over to the protection of the Hampshire Society of Forests, because now the New Hampshire Tech Society of Forests hires a private contractor to plow that and sand and salt and help. State really does not go in there and maintain that at all.
I'm a letter.
That's a very good possibility that we could talk about in the future.
I would, we should separate, just because, one, they're different entities, but two, um, I think we will have complete support on the no parking. I think it might be a little mixed on the support for the other areas.
Yeah, they can make it a little safer up there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah? Yes, Mr. Holt?
My only concern, Chief, is on, it's, it's working good the way it is now, just one side of the road. Once we go to the other side, you're gonna have the pedestrian problem still. You're gonna be walking down both sides of the road, plus they're gonna, those people are gonna have to cross over the road. And that's a 55 mile an hour speed zone.
I think we might be confusing... We're shutting down the opposite side completely. That's the westbound lane.
Oh, yeah?
We're gonna keep that. Yeah, we're keeping that shut down, I'm sorry. Yeah.
The lake, the lakeside.
So that will keep everybody that does park on the Mount Major side.
That was the major issue, was to keep...
Yeah, but this is an addition, Chief, and it makes, I thought you meant you were gonna, even, you were gonna grab the good spots and, on the other side. There are some good areas, they could park.
Right, and get off the shoulder, yes.
But that's a great issue that's the problem.
Right. Yeah, the only stuff I wanted to add to the eastbound side was just a guard rail section around the scenic view, uh, because it pushes everybody out into the traffic. Yeah. It is a breakout. Yeah.
But they don't mind even walking into traffic, they? They don't even think about the cats flying.
They're over there, yeah.
And, um, it seems to me they're taking advantage of the scenic overlook for parking. So there, if they did that, they're crossing the road again. So maybe we need some signage there, this is only for the scenic, you know, because there are more cars in that scenic overlook than I've ever seen there. Um, I'm coming from La Cumbia, somebody that was parked off, off the road, fair enough, and a big truck, big, big pickup truck, didn't see my little car over there, and practically pulled out in the road right in front of me, couldn't see me. So there is a bit of obstruction, because it's windy there.
Right.
So, I mean, we can't lower the street limit, the state could lower the street limit. And it's only, it only needs to be lowered when that area is full anyway. So I don't know whether, can we ask the state to patrol a little heavier on weekends for a while, or?
Some of the problem is that the people are, I mean, they've been bound in their houses. So we're getting a lot of extra up there.
We are, we are, it'll alleviate a little bit.
You know, so it's, I mean, hopefully, another month or so, we'll start coming out of this. I hope.
Chief, so my question, coming down eastbound lane, after you come past there, it's headed towards Alton Bay, are you gonna run the no parking down to where the other road entrance is, Cedar Mountain right there, where there's a cable cross, because that's where about where the guard rail ends?
That's where I was gonna run it to, where the guard rail ends there at that point. And then that way, if there's somebody trying to get in at the second entrance, there's still, it widens up, oh, right there, and they can use the shoulder on the eastbound side there.
Yeah, a few people are packing there.
Yeah. They'll pull, usually pull in there, so. But we have, uh, and we have been working with true, uh, uh, the state, we were headed to, to B, sorry, geez, it was just getting in my mind there for a minute, but to be out of Tamworth, I've been talking to, uh, the barracks commander over there, and they were on board with us helping, you know, post that and stuff like that. We had the, the postage only available in our trailer, so we went out and we did it. But they have been sending troopers out here to help with our duty officers to patrol that. Um, you know, they're very, unfortunately, like a lot of agencies around the state, they're feeling the most, as far as personnel, they're, they're down several spots, and they don't have the staffing that they're, that they should have right now. So they're, they're filling the gaps where they can, but they're doing, they're doing the best they can right now. We wouldn't get much more assistance out of that, just because they don't have the personnel.
Oh, I, I think it'd help a lot if they're just closing that west side there.
Yeah. And I did put one of our officers up there for quite a bit of time. Um, I had a couple of part-timers helping out this weekend, filling it back, filling shifts and, and, um, stuff, so I, I had, I put that out as a direct patrol for them as well, to have them out there and, and being present and, you know, parking off side of the road, even with the lights on, to slow people down a little bit, keep it up. So we'll, we'll keep doing the best we can, for sure. And keep trying.
I agree, it'll probably reduce after the pandemic blows or behind this. But I mean, let's face it, it is a popular hiking.
Oh, it is. It always has.
More and more popular.
Okay, gentlemen, how about, um, that we, I have a motion to, at the time of this draw, a letter from the Board of Selectmen, request, that is recommended by...
Is it, uh, back in front of us next meeting?
We'll have to come back for it so we can sign it and send the letter.
We can read it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second. Motion made by Ruben Whitworth to have the town administrator prepare a letter to the Hampshire DOT in regards to no parking on the westbound lane and the eastbound lane of, in the area of Mount Major upon the recommendations of the police chief, seconded by Bergen McDonald. Any other discussion? Paul the Board? Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ruben Whitworth, yes. Vote is in the affirmative. Move on to the next item for the Chief, which would be no boat trailer parking signage besides Pops' clam shack.
Sure. So this was another issue that we had talked about at the emergency management meetings that had popped up. Um, we had some overflow parking with boat trailers at that gravel portion of the rocks, um, to the, um, conference center side of Pops' clam shack, and they were pulling the vehicles in and having either the trailer hang out over the crosswalk into, to town property or vice versa, backing in as far as they can up the hill, and the vehicles were still nudging out in there. It's been, it's, it's been an issue because it's not consistent with the town ordinance of no trailer parking, which is, uh, on the other side of the town property, um, because there's a little bit of a, a, a discussion about ownership of property, private ship property versus town property. So, with talking, after talking about it at the meetings, but also going out and physically looking at it, I took... The recommendation is, is that we put, um, consistent no boat trailer parking signs, just like we have on the other side, but we put them at the line just over the crosswalk onto the gravel section. That section, first section right over the shoulder is the common area where the property line stops. And, uh, John did a, a lot of research on that and actually stated that there's a granite marker in there underneath that gravel, um, that shows with it. But the recommendation would be to come in probably two or three feet on either side of that section and put two no trailer parking sign. The reason we can't close it off is the conference center owns it. They're in support of us doing this, but they also have an arrangement with Pops for, one, their employees use that as over the parking in the summertime with their lease with the, the conference center, and two, he has a dumpster removal company that comes in, in dumpster, so he can't put permanent signage to obstruct that. This would give them room to get around, but I really think it will strongly discourage anybody that's going in there right now with a trailer from parking in there with a trailer. Nobody wants to risk it in their truck and drive a tow. Um, so I, I think just having those in there would, which...
We have to, these signs say, "No parking, boat trailers anywhere in bed."
Then you'd have to eliminate, because you couldn't have it in one spot and think everyone's gonna read it.
No, we could start, instead of having the new sign, we're gonna have signs made up, have a new ones made up that way, instead of just no boat trailer parking here, and here, and here. Put it, no boat trailer parking in the Bay Area.
I think that's a po, that's a possibility that we could do, yes.
You know, start as we replace these signs, start making them that way, so we, they understand that you can't find a cubby hole over here, because if it's in the Bay Area, we're gonna tow you.
How about reminder signs about the policy of parking on the letter S road? I mean, that's the policy. Uh, signs on both sides of the road, proper trailer parking is on letter S road.
I think we have a sign down today now at the boat ramp that says, "Parking out..."
On the other side, I think, or on the other side.
Yeah, they don't find any signs on the other side.
I don't think there's any signs on the other side.
Oh, there shouldn't have.
Funny, because you're putting your boat in, so you should be able to read it as you're putting your boat in.
And the only reason, the only reason we have this problem right now is because of Downing Landing is closed.
Right, right.
We didn't, Downing Landing's opening was open, we wouldn't have this problem.
No, a lot of people are packing over there.
So by launching, by launching at the boat ramp, they should see that sign.
Without, we must spend extra funds to put a note sign across the street by the railroad sign.
At least that's my view.
Yeah, that's, that's why I say if you put, oh, packing anywhere in the bag, which are boat trailers, start making the signs that way, so they don't find these cubby holes, and we gotta keep buying signs.
Well, once the Downing Landing opens up again, that won't be an issue.
I think this is...
Except it'll get backwards. So just the main fact of the sign saying, "No trailer parking," I would think would be adequate.
All right, Jim, I don't think this needs a motion, put two signs there, because it is on town property, and it is part of the Bay ordinance of no trailer. Would you like a motion? Gentlemen, there's no other discussion, but Chief, I would consider a motion to place no trailer parking signs at the property line of the Christian Conference Center, Pops' clam shell with the town, at the town's property. Don't move. Second. Made by Ruben Whitworth, seconded by Mr. Holt. Any further discussion? Paul the Board, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Vote is in the affirmative. Move on to the next one, which would be Jesus Valley Road.
Okay, so Jesus Valley Road, uh, became a popular site too after, uh, some of the postings went on. We, uh, the police department was called up there, not last weekend, but the weekend before, then, as when it originally surfaced, and, well, my officers went up there, took photographs for me to take a look at, um, when they responded, spoke to the property owners at the very end of the road. Uh, the road, those of you, I think most everybody's familiar with that area, but for, for those of you that are listening, uh, the road goes to a certain point, um, at the end of the road, it stops, and there's a private drive that goes up further to the Lang property up in there. The Lang property was the one that actually called us two weeks ago, or two weekends ago, um, where they had their private driveway obstructed by people that were parking there to access the trail system by the old Class 6 road. So we went out there, we addressed the issue there, there and then, but said that we would, you know, bring the problem back, um, to the emergency management team and talk a little bit more about what we could do over there. Um, I, originally, it was talked about, um, posting one side of the road. Part of the biggest problem they have there is that road doesn't really have any shoulders, um, that are suitable shoulders to get off the road. So when they park to a breast down the roadway, you can't get an apparatus down there. We, that's an important area, because that's where our fire department deploys for injured hikers, lost hikers, which we're getting an uptick in that, given the amount of people that are utilized in the area now. So we, and, you know, we, the police department can patrol it, but we know that, you know, if somebody parks there and then takes off on the mountain, it takes us a while to get a tow truck to the Alton area, because there's nobody towing locally in, in town right now. So we have to get somebody from the other area to get up there, tow the car, and there's no telling what how long that will take us to get a car out of the way.
We don't use tilter towing on 140?
Sure.
Tilter towing? Right on 140?
Business anymore. Yeah. They're not towing anymore. Yeah, I think so. They, we don't have anybody that's still locally towing in town. And I, almost everybody that's ever started a towing business, even locally, comes to see, comes to see me, give an insurance binder, so they get a whole rotation, so. But, um, so unfortunately, you know, patrolling it, and there, there are consequences, but we're gonna be dealing with out-of-staters and people traveling from all over. Those warnings are only gonna, they're, they're only gonna get out so far. So the word's not gonna travel as well as it does on other, other local areas that aren't highly visited by out-of-state traffic and stuff like that, people coming in that aren't familiar with the area. So, uh, putting some sort of signage, you know, parking between signs on one side of the road was originally what was discussed, um, and I think that was brought to the board last week. Um, and the recommendation, I talked to Ken, and we talked about all these areas in depth, because Ken's got a lot of knowledge on these areas as well, and, um, he was going to get the signs made up and no parking between signs, instead of trying to line a res, a rural road like that with no parking signs every 20 feet, we're just gonna do the no parking between signs and keep them off one side of the road. Um, Ken is recommending that, um, keep them off the right side of the road, because that's the side of the road going in that leads right into the private drive, and if they stay to the left, there's more room for them to get off the road, and it leaves a wider opening for the residents to get in and out of their driveway down there at the end. Um, but we talked a little bit about it a little further at today's meeting, and one of the other issues, so we didn't get called up there this weekend, but we did get reports that I think the number was 40 cars, it was 40 more cars up there this weekend. Um, so we didn't call, and I think the Langs didn't call because they knew that we were actively working on this, um, but, um, they did, um, pass that information along to the fire chief, and we talked about it in our meeting today. So there was some talk about two other options that, um, to go along with the no parking signs that might be, that would be beneficial. Um, one would be putting an official sign from the town where the town road stops, because right now the homeowners have to, oh, you know, private property, don't trespass those little square signs you buy, you know, at the hardware store, and you put on, on, on a tree. They just don't really command as much attention as a town sign that says, um, "Town road ends here," or "Private road beyond this point," metal sign on an actual post. Um, you know, that's something to consider, the board to consider. I know that we were trying not to get into, you know, hundreds of signs to put all around town, but these are issues that, you know, though they're being highlighted right now, they have been issues in the past as well.
Also an offset of the taxpayer, that, but...
It isn't, because it, it got to the point, one of the other reports we got today, and we talked about in the meeting, was they actually were pulling up parking in their driveway at the end, and then he, they had a lot of hikers that weren't familiar, they're not familiar with the area. Right. And so they were walking up through the property to access the trail, when they didn't realize you could access it from below. So they were walking up through their property, and the, the property owners were continuing to deal with that because there's two houses up there now, so they're walking right in between the two houses. And you know, that would, that would be concerning to me if I lived up there, I know that. And, and we can't be up there all the time dealing with hikers. It's not just a single trespass issue, it's, you know, a recreational area that a lot of people are going to try to take advantage of. So the other thing that was, the reason they were having foot traffic through their property is there's absolutely no identification down there as to where a trailhead is. So people that aren't familiar with the area who get it on, there's a lot of those pop-up sites that are like camp, like hiking sites and they tell you, people go on there, it's like a blog and they'll put it out and that's how the word gets out, but there's no real prescription, it's just the end of Jesus Valley is where the trail is and nobody really knows.
Legitimate hiking trail?
What's that?
That's a legitimate hiking trail?
Yes.
You have conservation, put a sign over there that says trailhead.
Conservation already has signs out on the lower part, it's the Beaver Dam that's at the end of the road that marks different trail, walking trails. So yes, Conservation Mission, possibly if they're part of that trail system should mark it or the Stoneville Club, they have, it's basically the Stoneville Club that the chief is talking about where they can.
Oh, that's where they're accessed that, can we put it, maybe get all of them and have them put a sign up that says trailhead.
Or is it a stonehill on there?
But the other thing, years passed, ever since I was a kid, when Woodrose lived at the end of the road.
Right.
You go up to the end of the road and you follow the trail all the way up, that's where the Stoneville Trail went. There's two links to the Stoneville Trail, one comes up off Route 11, goes out behind the Langs out of property. The other one cuts off the road on the Class 6 road and built Sheep Road, they call it. Off Mount, there's a trail there. So there's two trail systems that lead up to that. But there, but the houses, what, and as it has history have shown, you have used Google Maps, you look up boundary, boundaries in the town or tax map, they don't even list the current owners. The owners are 30 years ago. So the old trail system still shows going right up between, on the old side of the farmhouse because on the other side, it's something like gravel pit, it's a go and people are just parking it. But since then, in the last few years, Danny Lang has built a house up there on the other side of the property. So now you've got two homes. They don't think it's anybody's door yet, they're just, oh, well, here we are, it's a parking.
Yeah, what if your wake is up there?
Unfortunately, visiting people in our community, they want to go hiking, have a pleasurable day, fortunately they forget, they wouldn't want that in their neighborhood.
Right, right. Yeah, you got to be respectful.
So it's, and it is a problem. You can't just shut down no parking because the Conservation Commission already has an easement up there for the Beaver Dam, which has a trail system around that. But I think the chief's right, I think at the end of the road.
Beaver Dam's below that though, right?
Just, just below it, afar. And that extends out over 100 acres. So I think the chief's right, municipal sign at the end, town road ends here, private property beyond this point.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah. And then say no turn or something on it.
Yeah, something to turn around. Something that'll command a little more respect than, unfortunately, those little signs just don't.
I make a motion, we allow the chief to have Kenny put a couple of signs up on the end of Jesus Valley Road that shows the end of the town property there.
Motion. Motion has been made by Mr. McDonald to allow the chief to work with Mr. Roberts about putting up Jesus Road ends at this private property, property beyond that, two signs, one on each side.
Yes.
To demand attention. Okay. Second by Mr. Lurshell, any further discussion?
Yeah, can I add to that too?
You want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I'd like to amend it, to send a letter to the Snowmobile Association to see if we can get them to put up a sign that says trailhead.
And the Conservation Commission.
Conservation.
Ask the two of working conjunction. Okay, Mr. McDonald has amended his motion, original motion, having the chief, Mr. Roberts, put up two signs at the end of Jesus Valley Road, delineating town property versus private property and also to have, to send a letter to the Stoneville Club and Conservation Mission, hopefully working conjunction of setting up the trailhead markers for the Mount Major Trail System. Do I have a second? I have a second, any further discussion on the amendment? No further discussion on amendment, no other vote, I'll take a poll of the board to amend it. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Lurshell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
It's the whole.
Yes.
Amendment passes in the affirmative. Now back to the original motion, putting two signs up to the end of Jesus Valley Road, acknowledging that in the town road and private property, one was asking the Stoneville Club and the Conservation Mission working in conjunction of marking out the trailheads away from the private property. And the second was by Mr. Lurshell, was it? Second, any further discussion? I'll poll the board again, Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Lurshell?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Vote is in the affirmative. The chief, I think that takes you to the end of your session.
It should be the end of it.
You're right, sir.
You wouldn't walk on the state.
Don't at this time, but we do move on with the rest of old business. I do, we need to have an announcement, submission of public comments, question concerned. Received from Dick Shea at AOL.com, sent Monday, April 27, 2020, 1146 A I, to Board of Selectmen, subject letter to the Board of Selectmen. Please accept this email as public comment for your next Board of Selectmen's meeting. Robert Shea, and for Robert's Co. Road, Alton, Hampshire. I was very pleased that the 2021 Audit of Funding Road Improvements and Complete Reconstruction was approved by all the voters and have been following prog- have been following progress to date. The board, board met by telephone, Mr. Ken Roberts recently discussed his approach to this year's program. Several roads requiring attention were reviewed, but the only mention of Robert's Co. Road was in regard to the Highway Department having marked some trees for removal. At the February 10th meeting held to discuss the board's preferences for this year's road work, Mr. Roberts indicated, if I understood him correctly, that Robert's Co. Road would likely be a multi-year project with some of the portion of the work done by our town crews, some by outside contractors. A survey would be required, as would some outside engineering work. I realize there are legitimate concerns to the effect that the public, current public health shutdown might have on town tax roads, but I'd like to request that the board allow Mr. Roberts to at least contract for the required survey work, possibly for the engineering work as well. This would allow some progress to be made on the project without a major commitment of funds and provide information on what issues, if any, would need attention going forward. Understanding public hearing will be required at some point, the survey results would be of value at that time. Thank you for your consideration and please also accept my thanks for the poor efforts the board is making to keep the town along during this difficult time. Richard Shea. And Mr. Roberts is on later on tonight about the road reconstruction, so I think we can hold off on any discussion on that until then. That is all that I have for announcements from emails that have come in from the public. Now that, since we moved up old business, request for hawkers and vendor permit, bait, brew and organic move. You have that in your packet there and you get the letter from Mr. Devers. This young lady asked, is she on the line? Okay. Jenny is on the line with us. Hi there, Jenny, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'm going to hold you out for just a second while I talk to the board about this. She came in last week looking for a waiver to the hawkers and vendors permit. And we had all stated last week, as long as we felt that she was going to be on private property, that she would not need a hawkers and vendors permit, the only way she would need one is if she traveled throughout the town. As my understanding last week, she was primarily looking just to set up on her own property that they're purchasing of Suncooke Valley. I read Mr. Devers' letter, he's been in contact with her, I believe Liz has. John's feeling as long as she's on that property, she would not need a hawkers and vendors permit. Jenny, at this time, I'm going to ask you, are you, so is my understanding, you're primarily just going to stay on the property there?
Yeah.
So, okay, Mr. Lurshell wants to ask you a question.
Actually, I was going to say, after review from the building inspector, you also have a special exception pending with the zoning, correct?
Yes, for, for a cafe though, so not, not in regards to.
Right, no, but what you're here for is for whether or not we agree with you not having a hawkers, uh, vendors license to pay $500. That's what our actual issue is here this evening, that's what we need to decide. The, I, I wanted to bring it forward that the zoning board will take care of the issue with going forward with the special exception, so that's not something to be decided here this evening. So I just wanted to make that clear. We're, we're just deciding on the vending license, not of the waiver of the $500, correct?
Okay, yep.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted, just wanted to clarify.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Holt? Have you taken ownership of the property yet?
Are you asking me if, if we own it? We purchased it December 13th.
Yes, they do, they purchased it December 13th. So you have ownership, okay.
Yeah.
You, we're going to have a cafe there and the food wagon, you're going to have both on the property?
So, um, once the cafe opens, that I won't need the food, the food truck is supposed to be for events and, you know, doing things, um, you know, like graduation parties and weddings and stuff like that.
Well, that's what, that's why I'm ask, that's why I'm asking that, once, so once you get the caf- cafe open, you're going to use the food truck around town?
Yeah, so once the cafe is open, yes, I'll be doing events, not necessarily in Alton, but just as a general concept, the food truck is not supposed to be parked in one spot. But, so once the cafe is open, the food truck won't also be there, it will be used just for events.
Well, I think once the cafe opens and the food truck comes off the property, she's going to need the hawkers and vendors.
Okay. Well, I want to clarify something. I'm going to just clarify what I mean, it's not called a hawkers and vendors license, even though, tell people to fill it out that way, it's actually called a sales and solicitation on public property, private or park property.
And we're called a hawkers vendors license.
I, I know, I'm just clarifying the record.
Thanks.
And I have to agree with you, as long as it's on private property, she doesn't need a hawkers and vendors, but if she comes downtown and parks on Main Street, Church Street, wherever, Bay Area, whatever, she would have to follow hawkers and vendors up. Sales and solicitation on public property, sorry Jenny, Jenny. So at this time, I don't know how the board feels, but I'll take a consensus of the board and we'll put it to a vote, but I myself feel that she does not need it as long as they're on their own private property.
That's right.
Mr. McDonald, you feel the same way?
I feel the same way, but once it comes off that property, starts going around, then she's going to have to come back for.
I agree, only in the sales of Alton, other towns we don't.
Other towns doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
If she's going to drive around and stop anywhere other than private property, then yes, she would do it.
Mr. Whitman?
Hey.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Jenny, at this time, where you're going to put it on your own private property, the Board of Selectmen do not feel you need the hawkers and vendors license, if you plan on participating on Main Street or any public property, I, I feel at that time you would have to apply for them.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep, I understand that, thank you.
But at this time, we're going to take a motion to deny your request because you're going to be on private property. We'll make that motion that we're acknowledging you're on private property and you have the right to do that.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory to you?
Yes, it is, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Uh, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, not at all. I appreciate the process kind of moved quickly and I appreciate you guys taking the time to look into it and figure it all out, so thank you so much.
Good luck, good luck on your cafe and then I'll take the motion now from one of my board members. I need a motion that she's not required to have the vendor's license. Basically, what I need a motion though for is to deny the hawk, the hawkers and vendors, that's why it's listed, deny the hawkers and vendors along with that she has the right to operate on her private property.
Make a motion to deny the hawkers vendors license for her, that she doesn't need it for a private property.
Last second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Lurshell to deny the hawkers vendors license due to the fact that she's not, does not happen to have one as long as she stays on her private property. Second by Mr. Whitman, any further discussion? I'll poll the board, Paul?
Yes, yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ruben Whitworth, yes. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Vote is in the affirmative. Thank you, Jenny, have a great night.
Thank you, you too, bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, so at this time, we guess we need to pull up Mr. Roberts, Highway Department, Road Reconstruction, Public Hearing Discussion. Josh, let us know, Mr. Roberts, are you with us? Mr. Roberts, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Good, sir. So we have you here before us tonight on one issue, we've got a couple of issues, but we'll have to go back to the other one, about the road reconstruction, public hearing. Discussion was talked about that, find out if it was the state law or if it was the, something that was enacted by the town of Alton, Board of Selectmen has a policy. Looking into it, the town administrator and yourself, discussions about it, it sounds more like it was a thing the selectmen did in years past, just the roads are going to be redone. Is that the way you understand it too?
Yes.
And during your meetings with several of the property owners on the roads that selectmen had discussed and you were wanting to do this year, has there been any concerns about not holding a public hearing because of?
No, what I've, what I've received from most of them, I mentioned there may not be a public hearing and this was the major discussion and the talk with their neighbors and when, basically they said, well, why do we have to go do a public hearing if we've already talked to you? That's kind of what it came down to.
You think the folks you've talked to would sign off on a letter stating they understand that we will not be holding a public hearing this year and they're fine with what we're going to move forward with?
Right, and I basically told them off, there's any other problems, please, please come directly to me and we would address them.
Gentlemen, I'm going to let you ask Mr. Roberts the question or any discussion you want to have them, I'll turn it over to you folks.
So it's been determined that it's not a written and goal rule that we have to have the public hearing?
Right.
I would think that considering what the country is going through.
Mr. Holt?
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Lurshell?
McDonald, yes. Ruben Whitworth, yes. So it is the board's consensus, Ken, that we go ahead and move forward. My only feeling is I would like to have all the neighbors that you've talked to sign off on it, only so we didn't fall, we don't get hit upside the head with somebody saying, well, I didn't know this.
What I, what I'd like to do is, Mr. Chairman, is readdress a letter to them.
Yes, sir.
And send it back, another one back out mentioning that there will not be a public hearing and that any, any issues within any roadway, please direct them at me and I will direct them at the Board of Selectmen if I can't handle them.
Okay.
And that's a second mailing, excuse me?
You're going to send them certified?
I can, if you'd like.
I, I would like so because that way they, nobody can say they never received.
Right, yep.
I know it'll cost a little more, but I think it'd be well worth and our best interest to do.
Sounds good.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, yes, I think we should have.
So, yes, need a vote on this.
Not really.
So can you have a full blessing of the board, board to go ahead with the second letter addressed to the folks that either there will be a public hearing that would be moving forward with road reconstruction, does that sound good to you?
Yes, I'll address the letter, I'll have the letter drafted in the morning, set it up for approval of the town administrator prior to sending it out.
Sounds good. Gentlemen, you're all set with that, our guest? Okay, so Ken, that was an easy one. I'm going to put you at bay though until we get through with the rest of old business, if that's okay.
Could I just mention two things, if I may?
Sure.
Uh, the signs at the end of Jesus Valley Road were already ordered, I do have them, I should be picking them up tomorrow and basically it says, no parking beyond this point. And that would be right and left of the, right and left of the roadway before it goes up the hill.
That'd be right, right at the end of the town property?
Right at the end of the town property, basically that hill going up is private property, we have permission of the landowner to turn the plow trucks around on the top because it's easier for us. And that's, that's the only reason we've gone up that far. Uh, but I can put those right and left at the very bottom, so it would be basically no parking signs all the way up the right-hand side, which again, we should pick up tomorrow, should have them installed by Wednesday. It says no parking between signs and then when you get to the very top, it will say no parking beyond this point.
Very nice, that's nice.
Okay, that, that's one. That's one. And then the second one is, I have the two signs sitting right here because I did pull them out, because I knew I got extras. And what it says in the bay, and I have two signs that will say, it says, uh, no trailer parking in Bay Area. And with your permission, I'll install those two signs right next to pops.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen?
Yes.
You got a consensus there?
Beautiful.
Okay, that's my only two comments on those. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Roberts?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yo. Moving on all business, which would be number five, the Harmony Park. Yes, uh. Uh, we got this packet last week of the expenses on Harmony Park.
Railings quotes.
Uh, till we get all the railing quotes back and everything, yes. This is what the expenditures I wrote today.
Yes, sir.
How much money's left?
Yes, sir.
Totally, totally confused. It is. I didn't know you were gonna bring this up tonight. I would've brought my bag with me, so I'm gonna go by what you have to say. On Mr. Roberts.
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to find out. expended and how much money is available and what the balance is.
Are you supposed to read these?
You look at GMI asphalt, they were paid according to this, to the best of my knowledge, one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, I didn't have that. I never saw that.
Okay. Uh, I believe this was given to all the sort. Was, but I didn't realize you're bringing it on night. I didn't bring any of my information out of.
I didn't get mine.
Mr. We have a good copy of it, Robert?
And if you're, and then I add up what we paid Mitchie Corporation according to this. And on the front page listing, it's got the two thousand four hundred and fifty done in, uh, I believe seventeen, which was for engineering. But I add the two together, or add all three, and I come up with a hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine oh four that we've expended. Uh, it, it says paid out in two nineteen for Harmony Park, one forty-four, seven, nine, four here. But then it says we have a beginning balance of one sixty-six, three, fourteen, which that is on this sheet here, that's that. And also, when the project was first done, I met with, uh, town administrator. I was not a selectman and I believe, yeah, I was on the budget committee, but, uh, for the same reason. And I got, basically, I was shown that we spent four forty-six thousand oh ninety-six with Mitchie block. That doesn't match anything here. He bid for GMI was a hundred and forty-four thousand oh one-two. That comes up to a hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and eight fifty. But I got figures, nothing jobs, and I'm totally confused. And according to my calculations, we, uh, gonna be short a lot of money. For about, uh, uh, according to what I got here, we're about five, you, and you got about, let's see, one. One sixty-nine approximately left. And you spent one fifty-seven. Doesn't, it doesn't come up to twenty-four thousand, is what you're saying.
Hey, I know there was a report done by Laura. Have you gone in and sat down Laura on all the figures?
Well, it's kinda hard to.
Can I do that? Damn it, as hard as I'm, I'm sure you can. Can he come in though and meet with Laura? He's tabled, he sat there, she sat over here. I mean, he comes in for emergency.
Yeah.
He, you should have to bring him in.
Ask us so.
Temperature change.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a second, Ken.
Bob, you'd need to schedule a date and time with Laura. Would sit in here with social distancing and you would bring your packet and she would have her own packet. And if you asked her the questions, could explain things to you.
Two is, there's also maybe not showing in your books up there, there was money taken out of the highway department. Yeah. Left over from their budget that was put in to pay for some of these extra expenses. And Mr. Roberts on the phone, so I'm gonna ask him to chime in on this. Is that correct, Ken?
Yeah, there was actually twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-nine ninety that was taken and covered by the Board of Selectmen.
And then there was twenty-four thousand dollars left. We owe GMI, uh, which that money is still there to pay them. If I'm not mistaken on that.
Yeah, the twelve thousand has been taken out. They had to be taken out before December thirty-first of last year.
Right.
So what's left is the balance is the twenty-four thousand, which is the ten percent.
Yeah.
Well, that's here. That's on him.
Yeah. Well, I guess what the, maybe the answer, but your question's better because I don't have all the papers in front of me and gone over the numbers. It's to you to sit down with Laura and see if Laura can show you where these numbers are not adding up to you or if she can find an error somewhere in there that she's done.
Have a copy, anything that you think that we need.
Normally, I probably would've done it. Condition we're in today, things are a little different. But she could probably bring in all the paperwork itself and bring it in, sit down with you and go back and. Because this is hard to do over the telephone. It is. Not way it's for me. It, it is for any of us, but I, but I think that way it might answer some of your questions better. And then if you don't agree with her numbers, then we can look and do it at, at a regular meeting setting.
Right. Oh, I got another. You're done with that one?
Uh.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I had one more question about. Uh, have we done anything, uh, neighbors' problem with that wall that fell in?
Not as of yet.
Not as of yet. We.
They did go and pick up the debris off, off the dock and in the stairs and it was, it was, that was the day. It was pretty cold, standing up. That's what, uh, minimum would happen before that.
What are we gonna do? Put the wall back up?
Yes.
Can we do that or have a permit?
No.
No. We're just gonna answer, what we decided is we would hold off and discuss the retaining wall until Harmony Wall got brought back up. So we're not ready, we're not at that point to re-discuss and open all that up.
Why are we waiting and kicking the can down the road? We're gonna be at the end of May before they even get back in there to straighten out a beach.
So, because.
And we're waiting for railings.
The, the fencing quotes, we've only received one and it was thirty-six inches high. And if I remember correctly, the board wanted something shorter and that was only from one company when the board had recommended a couple of other companies as well. So we're waiting for those responses.
And I understand that.
Okay.
But we can still do this Harmony Park and decide on the block to get them in there to straighten out the beach and, and put everything back together and then put the railings on after. Because we're gonna end up in June or Fourth of July in there still trying to straighten out a beach and everything else.
And we're, we're following the. And if the board wants to change something, by all means, it will be done.
Our instructions were we're gonna bring it up the following meeting. That was the instruction.
Yes. Three or three weeks because we had to get the quotes.
We had to get all the quotes in, and I agree with that. Railings, we don't even have to have the quotes yet.
But that's.
We can put GMI in there, putting everything back together.
But, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're gonna get all the quotes in. We're gonna figure out what this job's gonna cost us. We don't know. And after reading this, we sure don't know. No, no, we don't, there's no extra money in this, so there's gonna be extra money.
They got a bunch of.
Yeah, but how much?
Well, we don't know yet.
That's why, that's why we're not gonna do it.
But, but you can still let GMI do the rest of their contract and finish that project. And then we can put the railings or do what we gotta do.
I'm gonna stop everybody here. Way the board directed Mr. Roberts to go out and get quotes on the fence, we're gonna stop all work. We gotta cease and desist on that job right now. The selectmen have not released that.
Down, absolutely. He's right.
All came down, we brought up the meeting, we asked the highway agent to go in, Mr. Roberts go in, one of his guys get all the blocks off the dock, out of the water, put them uphill. We never instructed Mr. Roberts to redo the, do the wall fence. We never instructed him to refill and back behind or anything. We hadn't decided. We said we were gonna wait till Harmony Walk take back. We were gonna discuss what the costs are gonna be and where the funds are gonna come out of to pay for the extra costs that are entitled. So, nobody hasn't done what they're supposed to do. They've done everything we've asked them to do. Cease and desist till we figure out what we're gonna do. If that, if I'm wrong with that, one of you guys needs help.
No, you're right. The only thing I would like to add to that, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is I would like to address the collapsed wall. Because that's a kind of a separate entity, except for the fact that it, it fell over. Uh, and it was water that could've come from the road, washed out behind a new wall and injured it. I don't think he should wait until we decide to fix the, the wall itself and wait for railing or anything like that. I think we really, good faith, should go over there and, and dig out behind it, restack it. And he's, the homeowner is well aware of not looking for anything new. He's not looking, he wants it restacked. That wall was leaning before. We started the job for what? But two, why should the rest of the people, when we lift, because stay-at-home owner or anything, why should they not be able to use the town beach? He should have to wait like the rest of them.
Now, my question is, do we have any issue?
Well, we should be doing that block and lowering it down and setting that whole wall and finishing this job.
We should.
And then come back in and discuss it.
We can't finish the job until we actually, Bob, to Bob's point, is we need to figure out where we're at cost-wise and how much more it's gonna cost.
The change is what's gonna cost, which is GMI.
Well, you got, you got a lot of talk. One, you're not, you already asked GMI, you're asking GMI to go back and tear down that part of that wall, replace wood blocks.
Yes.
That's not part of the job description already. So now we already got an added cost. We don't know. But, Mr. Roberts, do I believe we have cost yet on that?
Yeah, in the package, and we've only got a partial package, uh, just to enlighten everybody. We have Michi Corps estimate of the change in the wall. It had to be re-engineered. They're not gonna charge us the engineering cost, but they're also gonna, there, there's different blocks have got to come in as far as corner blocks because of the way it's stacked. But we actually had, uh, GMI volunteer, because they have a job going in Antica, to drop off the extra block, the Michi Corps, that's part of the estimate that the board will see when the package comes to them. And, uh, GMI's ready to come back in and finish whatever, whatever is decided by the board. And, uh, we have one cost estimate for thirty-six inch rail. It's like eleven thousand dollars. And we have Alan from East Coast Welding, he's trying to come up with an estimate that's gonna be, probably it's custom-made, you know, because they don't sell an eighteen inch rail. So that's gonna be interesting because it will be fairly high. As far as the wall goes, because of the type of block that fell over, it looked like somebody had done something between the block, lack of a better term, it looked like caulking.
Yeah.
And the only thing, because it is cement, it's very similar, I think, to the cement that's used on the, the wall that we have, uh, to attach the top block. So if we did put that wall back up, the only thing I'd do is see if I could get some extra cement and use that between the blocks that we restack. And we can pin. Now, we as the Highway Department, that'll be up to the Board of Selectmen, we can go back in and do it. In research, we have found that there's never been a wetlands permit for that piece of property.
Okay. And that property just sold.
Yeah.
Recently.
Yeah, yes.
So. So I, I guess, and then two is if you go in and redo that wall, are you gonna have to break it down to the shoreline?
It's already pretty much broken down to the shoreline.
So is this gonna require wetlands permit to go back in and disturb this? Because you can't.
I'd have to.
Without a permit, right?
I'd have to talk to Cindy about it and have her look at it, which is our environmental people.
But this time, it's my feeling, um, as a selectman, that we wait, we hold back until you get all your information, you pack it into us, talk to Cindy, see what it's gonna require. Also, if there's any pitches there, but once we put this wall back up, we are not responsible for it after this point. We will put it back in time.
That wall was leaning pretty good before we.
But do we have pitches? Did we have pitches?
Yes. Kenny, do you have pitches before we went over in that corner on that wall?
No, I think Paul said he took them in December.
In there, in that corner?
I think Paul said he took pictures of that wall in December and it was intact.
Yeah, and that was leaning back then, right?
You see it leaning? All right, so I guess I'm gonna ask the board, was that they wanna table this until Mr. Roberts has all the quotes and prices in? A week, two weeks. That's what I'm saying. From, from what I heard tonight, yes. This equipment, yes.
It ain't leaning.
Lorschel, we're willing to wait until we have all the information.
Yes, yes.
Of this project along with the wall.
Yes.
And from Cindy. Mr. McDonald?
I think that we should get the wall price and give GMI a yes or no. We're nearing do it. So at least we're getting the wall done, the walkway up to Harmony Park and the beach cleaned, because we're gonna wait for estimates. Boy, you know it. We do, we kick the can down the road. We're gonna be at the Memorial Day weekend and that beach is still gonna be.
Well, I'm not kicking the can down the road. I wanna know what the cost of gonna finish this job and get it done and done right. We have to wait about, Roberts, two weeks is still here. But I'm not gonna warn this like we did before.
We didn't have that cost.
No.
Know what the wall's.
We don't have the cost of the right. I don't believe you. All right, so gets to the board's wait, Mr. Roberts has all information for us.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Roberts, we're gonna table this matter until you have the rest of the costs associated with. And where you recommend that the money comes out of, where we can get the money from this between you and the town administrator to cover the costs. Does this sound good?
Yes, sir. Close the beach till September.
Next item is gonna be number six, Shipley's.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last meeting, Virgil, you had a concern with the, uh, permit that I was talking about for quite a while. Well, I've done some more investigation since then, Virgil. I've got it all right here. Uh.
Two thousand eleven permit?
No. Two thousand one. Uh, I've got the state application, I've got the state permit, I've got the town of Alton's permit to rebuild the dock that we're talking about.
That was on the other side, wasn't it?
No.
No, sir.
I'm in the front.
No, sir, there's pictures of it right here. Uh, which is what we don't have much of, pictures. They rebuilt the one over by the other side. Nope. This is it right here. This, this is the docking question. Uh, they did this, they did the three piers, they did all new plank and four thousand dollars. Uh, that's the estimated costs. Alton. Here's the state application. Got the state permit here. There's the.
Yeah, they didn't rebuild, they did the dock.
No, no.
It's just on the dock.
No, they didn't. They did existing clips. They did, they put new caps on the three piers.
Guys, one at a time.
One at a time, because all over there, the dock.
I didn't see the phone.
They rebuilt the dock. And they, uh, did, uh, three caps.
Yeah, the caps out of the dock, that was it.
No, and they did all new plank.
Yeah, that's the top. And what you're saying, two thousand one?
Two thousand one. But I'm trying to, what I'm trying to prove is town ownership.
Right.
And I can't.
No, it's, I'm gonna agree, it's very difficult. I have a lot here as well.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Yeah. You have to prove town ownership to fix this stuff.
Okay.
If the town.
Okay, here's where I wanna stop. Here's where I wanna stop. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Here's where I wanna stop. Because it's such a gray area and where it's getting to be such a hassle with information, because it's, every year seems like something was a little different. And we don't have definitive information.
We got it what I hear, Paul.
It's not, it's not black and white. There's nothing here that's black and white of ownership.
This is black and white.
I don't have anything here in black and white. I mean, the deed.
This is just a construction permit.
Yeah, but.
That's not in the bank, right?
No.
That doesn't prove ownership.
No, I, I'm not saying it proves ownership. I'm trying to prove that the town of Alton owns that. And every time I pick something up, if Mr. Shipley's gonna spend four thousand dollars to rebuild the town dock or to fix the town dock. Is Mr. Shipley gonna spend tax dollars, pay taxes on that town dock for I don't know how many years? That's the next thing I'm looking at. Do I wanna know how many years?
Hold on.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Paul, verdict.
Tax taxes, owner. Leased land from town.
Leased land. That's not land.
That's all considered land.
Come on over there.
Thing, that's, that, I have.
All right, guys, I wanna call, I wanna call the meeting back, Laura.
That's all considered land. And I can show that on hand too.
I'm gonna call the meeting back, Laura, because we can't have you. Mr. Holt, if you'd like, the information you've gathered, have copies made up and distributed to each selectman. So then when we bring it back up, we discuss them on a meeting, everybody knows what you're talking about. And then we'll schedule it for another meeting to discuss.
I agree.
The town administrator, Paul, had been given this task to this, to look at everything, research everything. We've asked the new town adminis, uh, assessor to look at, review all these records. So when we discuss this again, I'd like to have the town assessor here.
Well, can I say?
We just finished and have this on a meeting that we don't have. Just as long.
Here's what I'd like to do, if we can, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to have a workshop with the selectmen, with Mr. Shipley, the town assessor, and Jim Sess. the town assessor, and Jim Sessom, the attorney, and sit down and pound it out once and for all.
And can we?
And to prove ownership of either we own it or we don't, and to see what Mr. Shively would like to do.
And Liz, can we have the tax assessor? Get the copy of the deeds from Madeline Adams right up through to when the town took it over?
There's more, um, there's a. I have the deed.
When the town took it over from back with?
No, I have the deed from Madeline.
Adams, yeah.
To.
Right. Bear.
Bear.
And then to the town.
So perhaps during the workshop, I could explain more.
What? You can't follow that deed up through the sales?
No.
Why? You, you go to the Nielsen's deed and then go to, um, that was Bear's. I know, but I'm trying to think.
Bear members last name, and then it went to Bunker.
So that there was a hiccup. Alright, so.
But it's still got to be up to register deeds.
It's a workshop. That there is a hiccup in the trail of deeds.
It's got to be up to that.
What's the hiccup? Alright, so at this time, I'm going to stop now because this was not part of the, really, the reason I was going to write it was there's too much paperwork out there and not out of us half. So I'm going to let Liz go back to it.
And that's why I'm trying to find out if we can follow that trail. There's got to be a way to follow that trail up to that deed.
She's still, she's still researching.
Or get a title company to do it.
And Mr. Sessom has been researching.
Yes, he has. That's why I go.
For a workshop. So I, I want to put this off till we have workshop. We, we roped it off. There's no trespassing on the dock.
Correct.
There's no trespassing on the stairs. It's going to take a little bit to get everything done.
Can I, can I say something?
And then she's going to look into it. I think I can go back and give her some information on the time that Bear and Bunker purchased the property because they both came before the board of selectmen, asking for the lease to be transferred into Mr. Bunker because the Bears are moving.
Right.
And that was. So at this time, I'm going to ask that we stop this, go back to the workshop. We'll have Liz and the town assessor and the town attorney present us this case. Mr. Holt, to give the information you've got, you want to make copies made up in Town Hall by Mary to be distributed to us along what Liz is going to give us. And give us a couple of weeks to look at it and review it. Because I know in between my business and stuff, I'm not going to be able to sit right there and get it.
I was out of there in the mid nineties, towards the end of the nineties.
Bear, Bunker took it over from the Bears.
Why?
Let's do that research and find out.
Okay, I agree.
That's all fine.
That's all fine.
I'm, I'm trying to prove town ownership. I'm not. But every time I look, it leads me in the other direction. And I haven't got anything back that won't. Maybe I, we can do it now. Maybe I can get.
It's here somewhere.
Yeah, that dock does need to be fixed.
Yes, it does.
No arguing with that.
Right, of course.
It's.
Mr. Holt?
It's strictly my opinion. I, and the only reason I brought it up tonight was the comment you made last week, Virgil.
I still think the town should go down with the excavator, lift the top off, and fix the crib and put a bag on.
Alright, you made a comment that my permit was for his house.
Oh, the two thousand eleven permit that they said at the delivery session was the two thousand eleven permit that Lawrence said was two thousand eleven. And that was for the dock at the house.
This is a two thousand one permit.
Yeah, but he said the two thousand eleven.
Alright, so what happened at the delivery session, that's the past, we can't change anything about it. What we can do is go on there on in from now, wherever all the paper lies.
Yes.
Wait for the recommendations coming back from town administrator, legal counsel, contented town assessor.
Can we call? I'm asking because he'll probably know right where to go for the deed.
You have all the deed.
We have.
So at this time, at this time, I'm going to move on. We're going to move on to old business. Gentlemen, stop by.
Yes.
Moving on. Mr. Roberts, Highway Department, excavator repairs. Mr. Roberts, are you back with us?
Yes, I am.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Alright, before you gentlemen, you have a present.
Kenny, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. Repair, new repairs to the excavator this winter, coming winter, the early spring of twenty twenty-one, at thirty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Mr. McDonald, I'll let you go ahead.
We discussed this a little, about a year ago or so. Little over a year. How come we didn't send it in this winter and use some of the leftover, um, road reconstruction money to get this thing done? If the motor was, if you're losing power already, before we screw something up in that motor?
Wasn't authorized by the Board of Selectmen to utilize any money in road reconstruction.
But it was going to come back in front of us for the motive to, to get it done in the winter.
I don't, don't disagree. I'm just saying that it wasn't authorized by the Board of Selectmen to use road reconstruction money. We weren't doing any road reconstruction. You can't send the excavator in when you're not doing the road reconstruction. Now that we are, we can put the excavator in and take it out of road reconstruction.
Jim, we could have still used that money that was set up for road reconstruction, because we know we're going right back into it.
Mr. Rochelle.
Kenny, can you clarify what is being done, what is wrong with the engine?
What they're going to do is because between eight and ten thousand hours, which this thing is pushing the numbers, it's recommended to rebuild before failure. If you put failure on the end of that, you add a whole lot more money to it because it hasn't failed yet. So the engine can do it. So in talking to the operator, who was Matt, you know, he said, you know, he's losing power in his, his hydraulics. Now, not a lot, but you know, if you run it every day, you realize that you don't have the power you started. So the two things that we wanted to look at was the engine rebuild and the hydraulic rebuild, which is both listed right there. And hopefully we can get another six or eight years out of this. For a cost of thirty-seven thousand for six or eight years, I think that's a pretty good number.
Didn't we also just replace last year work on the turntable?
Bottom.
No.
We put a bottom on it.
We did the bottom a couple of years ago.
Yep.
Now, when they did the bottom, they do the change too?
Yeah, they replaced everything that was necessary. And that's the reason you're looking at the numbers you're looking at is that depending on what they run into, and again, it's only an estimate. You know, hopefully they don't have to replace everything and the cost will come in cheaper, which it did on the last little ordeal. When we did the lower end, it came in a little bit cheaper than what we originally estimated because some things didn't have to be replaced. They were really in pretty good shape.
Well, that's, so your intent then is to do the repairs, use this, keep it for the next six years, and then trade it in or sell it?
Right. Either that or you put it into the rotation and it's approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I think for thirty-seven thousand, we can, we can get away with it another six to eight years.
Now, you, Kenny, I have, you have a question for you. Mr. Holt had one for you though, after Mr. Rochelle. Mr. Holt?
I got a couple. How come, being new on the board, Kenny, uh, how come this wasn't budgeted in your budget process? Because I think according to what I can see here, we, this is an older problem. It just didn't pop up.
Well, it's not an older problem. It's something that we've always done. Everything we've done on that excavator, because road reconstruction has always been into effect, has come out of road reconstruction. So we rebuild the bucket, we, whatever we do, we've taken out road reconstruction, but that was the mainstay of what the excavator is. So according to the way the Warren article and everything read, that we could utilize that money to keep this machine working, that road reconstruction. So to become a part of the operating budget, we wouldn't have known if it was going to be a part of the operating budget until road reconstruction failed. And it's a little late to go back in after everything fails.
Well, uh, that's another issue I have. I have a problem taking it out of the road reconstruction budget. Why?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, Virgil.
Why? Have you read the re- road reconstruction budget? I mean, have you read the Warren article? What does it say? I'll read it to you. It, it, there's nothing in here about maintaining equipment. This excavator is used for other things also, not just road reconstruction. It was used for ditching last year.
It didn't have road reconstruction.
Wait a minute, sorry.
Wait a minute.
Dr. Miss, wait a minute, Bob, I want to interrupt you for a minute. His question is directed at Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts, answer the question, then. I'll ask my questions and I'll let you come back in in a second.
And, uh, if you read in your highway budget, you have a sixty thousand dollar vehicle expenses. And if you read the backup, that's what it's for. It's for all your equipment, equipment expenses. Now, the road management program, the Warren article, dispels it out pretty, pretty good. Highway Construction Capital Reserve Fund is previously established, blah, 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 set amounts partially offset by revenues from the highway block grant estimated twenty one thou-, two hundred and one thousand this year. This is an annual appropriation that provides for the reconstruction of existing roads. It's recommended by the board, blah, blah. That in no way should that be used to maintain vehicles. You, what if you need a new engine in a dump truck? Are we, we going to charge it off to this account? What's the difference? Piece of equipment is a piece of equipment. You have a sixty thousand dollar line item. You should have put more money in that line item this year to fix that piece of equipment.
You're looking for an answer from Mr. Roberts or are you looking for?
I, I want to know why.
Mr. Roberts, can you answer that question?
When the approach was done with the Board of Selectmen previously, it was said that any expenses that is related to the excavator, because it was specifically bought and maintained for road reconstruction only. That's what we did. And then every year, that's all that excavator did was road reconstruction. It didn't go outside that line and do anything else until last year. Road reconstruction did not pass and it did go someplace else. And in the discussions last year, we, we discussed it last year a little bit of where we would do. Are we going to put it into the rotation? It is in the rotation. It's in capital improvements. You can look at it right now. It's two hundred and forty thousand dollar purchase next year to buy a brand new one. The approach that came to the Board of Selectmen was, do we get the maintenance? We take it out of road reconstruction. We, we've already done the lower end. Now, if we do the upper end, we could get another six to eight years out of that and stretch out the capital improvements plan. So it, it's not another big hit. That was the, the way it was kind of addressed. But it was decided previously by the Board of Selectmen that the maintenance for that excavator would come out of road reconstruction. Does that answer the question?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm going to stop here because I gave you your questions. I'm going to jump in next. So I got a couple of questions. We'll go back around and say. You said you had two questions. You asked the two.
I just got one little comment. I did not know that this was how you took money out, being a great selectman. I did not know you took it out of this account to maintain that.
A lot of things have happened over the years that you were here. Even when I came back, the things have changed, the way, the way things have done. Ken, I just, I want to go over the first page. Repairs include the three thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Removal and installation of all parts and components to access the engine. All labor to disconnect, remove and reinstall and reconnect the engine. Labor to disconnect and reconnect the air conditioning unit. Minor seals, gaskets, clamps and hardware, up to one gallon of each topped off fluid for all related compartments. I go to the second page, it says to install engine, engine, there's two. When I go down there, labor total is eighteen hundred dollars. If I go to item three, which is remove and install hydraulic pump, I get another labor bill of eleven hundred dollars. So am I misreading this contract or are we being double dipped for the engine for labor?
I think it's misreading because what it is is after they, they have to disconnect, like radiator's got to come out, all that stuff's got to come away from the engine, then they take the engine completely out. They have a machine down there, and if you've ever been through the new cat plant, you'd really enjoy it. They have a machine, they take this down, they rebuild it, they actually put it on a machine, rehook everything back up, and they test that engine before it even goes back into the chassis. Then they reinstall the engine and then they reinstall all the components on the outside to go back on. It'd be the same thing with the hydraulics.
I guess, I guess the only way, looking at someone that looks at contracts time and time when they're having repair work done, it just, the way it looks, thirty-four, thirty-six seventy-six on the front page, when you go to install engine, that's kind of like me reinstalling the engine. That's the way I read it. Just looks like there's a double hit for labor, that's why.
No, I think you're just looking at, they got to remove everything around it, then they take the engine out, then they reinstall the engine and then put everything on the outside back around it.
Well, I understand.
He just tried to break it. I'm sorry.
But I, it's written on that first page, it says removal and installation of all parts, components to access the engine. So they're already saying they're going to remove it and reinstall. All labor to disconnect, remove and reinstall and reconnect the engine. So I mean, they're already saying they're going to disconnect it, reinstall it, but within that thirty-six hundred dollars. So, and then the air conditioning unit, which that's nowhere related in, in there. So, uh, it just, to me, it just looks like it's less the hydraulic pump, eighteen extra hundred dollars. That's the way I look at it. So, and, and that's what I picked up on. I, I have no problem with getting this done if it saves, if we send.
And I can call Mike and have him rewrite it if you'd like.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars to save two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for another six years. I have no problem with that. But I, I'd just like to know, we did the underneath the year before, we do this up the top, are we looking at another forty thousand, another year or two years of repairs?
No, we shouldn't. We've already done the lower end. This is the upper end. There's really nothing else there. The turntable's in great shape. When they were here to inspect it, that's what they said. We, we went through the whole thing.
Alright, the boom is good though, because you did tell me what you were having Nash come in and what, do some welding on your boom.
Yeah, there was a crack that started to appear, so we went ahead and jumped on it before it got out of hand. So that's all been taken care of.
Uh, I have a question for you. Go back to this.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to see if Kenny can just ask him about that, because the way you're reading it is correct.
I can have him readdress it, but I think it's, I think it's just a schematic that all the junk's got to be taken away from the outside of the engine and reinstalled around the engine, not necessarily the engine itself.
Rochelle. Kenny, how, how old is this machine?
Two thousand four.
Two thousand four. What is this machine worth, do you, in your estimation, after spending money to rebuild the engine?
After rebuilding the engine? I really don't know after you. You should be in around, and this is only a guess off the top of my head, you should be in around eighty or ninety thousand.
Eighty and ninety thousand.
As a guess. Yeah, it's a well-operating machine. With the lower end rebuilt, the upper right hydraulics, I mean, you're back in the, lack of a better term, back in the game again with a machine that's going to run well.
So after this is done, for the next six years, regular maintenance, we won't have to rebuild this again?
We should not, no.
Ship it down the road the next time.
That's why I'm trying to get at now, see if it's worth shipping down the road now.
Oh, no.
Well, the way I, the way I tried to approach this for the Board of Selectmen was if in fact the numbers come in right to do a lease purchase, the lease purchase would drop the amount to around forty thousand for the two machines and you'd only have the backhoe installed in there as well. And then that later date down the road, what you do is because this is a big piece of machinery, you'd put that into the rotation as well. Into the lease purchase, then the same thing would happen. You'd have, you'd have warranties on all this stuff. And I don't think it would be over the, the original number, which was eighty-one, eighty-one thousand in the operating budget. So you take four major pieces of machine out of your capital improvements and you just rotate them off of that and you'll have warranties for everything. Does that make sense?
No, that's, I'm just, I'm not thinking about buying another machine, that's what I'm thinking. I'm just wondering what this, what this is worth, uh, now and what it's worth, what we think after it's rebuilt, rebuilt. Um, then you're saying you want to go six years with it, um, and we don't have to do any breakdowns and rebuilds again? That's fine.
We should not. We should not.
How often do we use the excavator?
Used all summer long, ten hours a day, four days a week. And in case of emergencies, it gets pulled out of the, called off a road reconstruction and gone on to something else. And I'm talking about floods and you know, tornadoes or anything else that might happen that just has to be go and take care of the emergency stuff. But other than that, it does nothing but road reconstruction, with the exception of last year, it did ditching. And because we're just getting the road recon.
Four, four months of the year.
We're probably working at least eight months out of the year. We, we do it until frost gets in the. We, we do it until frost gets in the ground and previously we shipped this thing into the cemetery and it worked in the winter until snow got too deep to work.
Okay. It's being used more than I thought, okay?
Yes.
Thanks, thank you.
No, I, I'm thinking, spend this money to save the money, we oughta be doing it. So, uh, you mentioned, uh, last year you did the ditching with it.
Yes.
All right, this year, how are you gonna do the ditching this year with it?
I'm not. Grady's gonna do the last of the ditching. We're ditching with it right now, I'll take that back. Only because the road reconstruction roads are not ready to go, a decision had to be made by the Board of Selectmen tonight and what was said at the last meeting, that we're setting up to go in and start rebuilding. The first road should be by the end of next week. We should be into Hayes Road and start the rebuilding of Hayes Road.
So we won't be doing any ditching this year? Well, no, he's doing some now, now, okay, after now. And if they, maybe if they get their projects done, they might go back to it, but it depends on how long his road reconstruction extends out, I would assume. You've used it down there stacking sand right now too, Kenny, right?
Yeah, we've thrown it up on the top, sand, sand is all in, we're actually on the gravel line now and we're about done with bringing in gravel. So I mean, it's, it's on the road right now. It just completed Hall's Hill Road, if anyone would like to go look at it. It just completed the ditching on Hall's Hill Road. So it's getting ready to move.
I would just like to comment, Mr. Chairman, to you and to the board. I feel we're misrepresenting the public with a warrant article for road reconstruction. And people think that's going for road reconstruction and not equipment maintenance, not when we have it in the budget, a maintenance. And that's the way I believe. That's just my concern with it. And it, I'll vote to have it built. I mean, it needs to be done, that's not an issue. My issue was where the money was coming.
Ms. Roberts, you have anything you wanna respond to that?
Uh, no, I, I, again, it was a decision of the previous Board of Selectmen and I just abide by them.
Okay.
Well, the only problem with it has to be done, this is gonna be for repairs thirty-seven. The funds should come from road reconstruction, which will be done over the winter with an estimated completion date sometime in early twenty twenty-one. So you would be sending this in when, December? Ken?
As soon as we shut down road reconstruction, we'll deliver it to them, just like we did the lower end.
These monies would have to be, no, they wouldn't have to be incoming because they come out of the road reconstruction fund for what you're requesting.
Yeah, they'd just be earmarked for that and I can notify CAT that to plan on this coming in probably the end of November, the beginning of December in twenty twenty-one, I mean, twenty twenty.
So what I could look at or maybe possibly consider, that we approved that the work be, be done on this and at the time we send it over to CAT, we'll decide then where the money will come from, in case you have any extra money in your budget. Perhaps we could take some of the money from your budget and then if we had to take the rest from road reconstruction fund, you could do that.
Always to use it out of that.
But we could make the commitment that the work will be done during the winter. Would that be satisfactory?
Yes, sir.
Take it out of surplus or general government?
You gentlemen agree with that? Mr. Virgil and Switman, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. The less money we can use out of road reconstruction, a happier ID, so we put it more in the roads. So I'll take a motion at this time. To approve the authorization to give the excavator repaired of, of the cost of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. To be done over the winter of two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, the spring of two thousand twenty-one. The funds to be paid out of, to be, not, not to be determined at this time.
Second.
One second.
Okay. Motion's been made. Any discussion? Mr. Co, any conversation to you, Mr. Roberts?
No, sir.
I'll, I'll poll the board then, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ruben Wentworth, yes. Vote is in the affirmative, we'll wait to, back in December or at the end of November, Mr. Roberts, hear from you and we'll sit down and figure out where the funds will come from at this point. Does that sound satisfactory?
Yes, sir, and I have notified CAT that they accepted the estimate.
All right, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kenny.
Have a great evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Bye.
We have two more items left. Number two, IT department, the live stream account. Josh could join us at this point? You want me to run your machine for you, Josh?
Exactly.
Pick it up. Make a bunch of hiccups.
Uh, so I wanted to talk about, um, we don't have nothing in that book for it, right?
No, we don't. No, that's why I once talked to you about it.
Wanted to talk just briefly about an option that we have. Right now, we're streaming video and audio over Zoom. And I wanted to see if it would be in your favor to do a live stream. It's view and listen only, no participation involved. But basically what this would allow for our residents and members of the public to go on the website and without registering, entering in any codes or doing anything like that, that Zoom requires, uh, it would be a, a window with, uh, the live stream playing on the website. So I, I saw that as an option in Zoom that they can connect, uh, to that live stream portion and I figured I would mention it, uh, and just see, you know, if you, if you'd all be in favor of, of me pursuing that and just looking at that as another avenue of getting the information out to the public.
But is there a way that we could set it up so like you could have planning board meetings with people on the Zoom from, say, the Legion Project and people who are against it on there that could talk to them, the meeting?
So that's where Zoom comes in. Zoom, with Zoom, we get all that functionality.
We can do that.
Yes. Uh, this is just a branch off of Zoom that allows us to put a, a quick and easy way for the public to go on and watch, uh, and hear the Selectmen's meetings and other meetings, uh, right on the website.
What's that cost?
So there would be some cost involved, uh, especially if we went with YouTube, I looked into it. I originally thought it was gonna be free and I talked to a buddy of mine and he's like, no, it's not free. So, um, yeah, and alternatively, they, they have YouTube, but then they also have Facebook. And I did some digging into Facebook and it looks like you don't have to have an account or anything like that and you can still utilize that.
And that would be just broadcasted on meetings over the Facebook.
Why, right?
Right. The, the perk to this is that we're doing this already with Zoom. It's just easier and it's just another, it, it's just another avenue of providing the access to the public.
Would you still need both of them, Zoom or this one? Or could you add just one or the other?
We can have both. I would recommend sticking with Zoom because it, it gives us more functionality.
Have both of them?
Do you, do that, you know what the cost would be to have both?
I don't have numbers off the top of my head. I can look into that and, and get back to you on that.
Big money?
It's monthly. It's a subscription base.
I think, I think what he's saying is he wants to know if the board would be interested or any, and he'll get us more cost factors and bring them back to us.
I'd say yes.
Anything that I think.
Looking at.
Worth looking into. My, my, they still have access to us on the phone as well and now we have three ways.
Yeah.
In pandemic situation, I think that's an important, uh, important thing, ju, just enough.
Oh, yes.
Yes. For them to see what we're doing, yeah?
I, I think it's.
Consent to the board? Okay?
Yes.
All right.
Go for it.
Thank you, Josh.
Sounds good.
Our blessings. Moving on to number three, would be parks and rec. Or town parks, I should say.
Well, I'm just wondering if we're gonna clean them and get the leaves out of them and are we gonna keep waiting?
Be nice one in the May.
I, I have to.
I know they're busy.
They, they are very busy and I have to assume that they will do that as they do that every year, but I mean, it was snowing today. You have to wait at least until the snow stops and so.
Snowing? Just cause you see it, don't mean it's collecting.
I think, I think what Virgil referred to, I was out last week, they came out here and they put some patch grass down, some area plants before they raked it up. Maybe add some lime, sweet and sour, but the rocks from the plowing were still left all over the lawn. I think that's where he has concerns.
Spring cleanup.
Spring cleanup. Sort of the sand off where plows are plowed it up.
And the acorns and, I mean, that some of the packs got two feet of leaves in. Now, I noticed and I just think that we should, that's, we should be doing that now to, for one, before the black flies get in there. And two, there's a lot of people using different packs and stuff. I know you're supposed to stay at home, but you see people walking through there, just even just trying to get up for a little bit. It needs to be started and they, they need to get started and cleaned.
At the next meeting, I noticed that they still think Parks and Rec is looking for a grounds person, I think. I think it was cemetery. I think it's Parks and I just hired somebody for grounds, like, two weeks ago.
Seasonal person, yes.
So we're still looking maybe possibly one more seasonal person, right?
Um, it would be for the cemetery, but I'm not sure exactly when.
Since you mentioned that.
So I, I guess if you could find out for next week's meeting, what?
Schedule?
The schedule is the Parks and Rec, get back to us so we know.
Yep.
Just let them know that. Did I have a couple of Selectmen that did notice certain things after they went and patched some things? You know, I guess where I used to do landscaping and home maintenance for folks, I always went and did all the prep work first, then I went back and did the seeding and stuff like that. Two, it's been a little early for seeding because of the temperature, ground temperature's a lot up, so it's a lot wasted money out there right now for grass seed to be put out. But cleanups.
Ruben, I don't even do landscaping, never having my life and I picked right up on it, that it's not what should have been done, I don't think.
But you were raised at a different time when you had to go out and load your lawns, Aaron's lawn, right?
Yeah, and it took care of it. It's cleanup, definitely.
We'll have Liz get back to a report.
And speak.
Can you?
Sound good? Thank you. You mentioned cemetery.
Yes. Can we have Liz get a hold of Jim? These are stones down by the, in the old cemetery here that are leaned over quite a bit. But we get him to make sure that's all taken care of before Memorial Day, just in case. Make sure that it's all, that stones are stood back up.
He has a department head, so I will speak with the department head.
I just have him go out and just fix them, I don't care who's the head. But they're leaning pretty bad and some of them are World War II veterans, World War I and stuff and they lean there pretty bad. I just, before they fall over and somebody forgets them and somebody starts screaming.
Which cemetery is that?
The old cemetery right here, Riverside.
I, I would say it would have been number four, but yeah.
Well, she mentioned cemetery and I forgot about it, so I just figured I'd mention it.
At this time, there's no further new business, we're gonna shop, new business, any discussion? Anybody else? I, I got a quick question. I hate to, did you have a? Do we have a bu, uh, safety committee in this town this weekend? We do? Yes, sir. Okay, cause I, I got a list all of them. Three towns, over twenty-five employees, half of them state, county, for our SAs, the state, the feds. And we do have that one, which comments is, uh, the building inspector, town administrator, highway agent, fire chief.
And?
Secretary.
Joint loss management committee.
Because I got a list of different committees and that was not. As soon as this pandemic gets over, and I know it's your first year, I will come back and ask the reorg, little reorganization on different department heads that each one will take a condition, okay? To discuss certain issues. Do you have something else you want to add there? Okay, I thought you did.
No.
Okay. So at this time, we need no more new business, I'm gonna move on to town administrators' reports, which she kinda passed over to Mr. Heath earlier. He might have one.
I, yeah, I just have one thing, just, just for informational purposes, to let you know I have to. I have to.
You okay?
Call the waste department. Yes, just one. Well, I had four, but.
Sure you were good.
So with this state of emergency, very busy up there, as you know, because things have come to you for waivers of fees and the influx of, of people. But, uh, last week, the superintendent let me know that most likely his budget will be overspent. He stated with a lot of work, schools closed, seasonal residents coming into town, everything has increased significantly, um, and the employees are very busy. Um, as two examples, the regular household garbage has doubled in quantity and we pay for that by the tonnage to have them take it away. Uh, and the tin cans is another example, which normally fill one of the large containers every three months, being filled every twenty-eight days and there's a cost to that, to have those taken. So he wanted you to know that it appears that most likely his budget will be overextended this year. Just a heads up, informational only.
That's what we had mentioned back at the beginning of this, that he was probably gonna be over it.
Yeah.
Does he need help up there? Cause I know the place is just mobbed all the time.
It was crazy, son.
Has he got enough help?
I will, I will check with him.
Maybe we have to send up one of the town crew up there on a weekend or something to help.
Pretty busy.
It's smart.
It was, what are you saying, they running Kenny's guys way during the day? Put them up there instead?
They usually, no. They, they don't work Friday, they're on four tents.
No, but you're gonna end up paying time and a half to do all.
He's up there most of the time anyways. We have a town crew guy up there most of the time anyways.
Shouldn't have any now, cause he should be jacked to full set.
But if he needs help through this, put it on the emergency management and get him the help he needs until we get through this.
All right, there's no more recycling up there to speak of. It's just, all right, just the key, so we're gonna move on. From town administrator report, she says she's all done. If you want that on agenda, we'll put it on the next week's agenda.
Well, you also got the scale.
Move on to approval of minutes.
Tin cans going and when you change.
April thirteenth, twenty twenty, regular.
I make a motion, we approve the April thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Rochelle, two minutes is April thirteenth, twenty twenty minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor? I'll poll the board. Mr. Holt? Yes. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth?
Yes.
Vote is in the affirmative. April thirteenth, twenty twenty, non-public. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, these were sealed by the board previously, I recommend that you release them.
All?
Yeah, there's just one issue in it, yeah.
Make a motion that we unseal the April thirteenth, twenty twenty, non-public session?
Second. Motion been made by Mr. McDonald to unseal the April thirteenth, twenty twenty, non-public session. Second by Mr. Whitman. Any discussion? Poll the board, Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Motion in the affirmative. April twenty, twenty twenty, meeting, regular minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the April twenty, twenty twenty minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald to approve the April twenty, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes. Second by Mr. Rochelle. Mr. Whit, I'll hold the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Vote is in the affirmative. April twenty, twenty twenty, non-public.
I make a motion that we, yeah. We're just gonna look at you, look.
Okay.
Ask you about these.
So this is one issue. You've already sealed it. It needs to remain sealed. So you don't need to do anything except for approve the minutes.
As presented.
As presented.
Don't have to say keep them sealed.
No, because they already are. They will be automatically.
So I need a motion, April twenty, twenty twenty, non-public session to approve as submitted. Motion made by Ruben Wentworth to approve the twenty tw, April twenty, twenty twenty, non-public session minutes as presented. Mr. Holt, second. I'll call any discussion. I'll call the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Vote is in the affirmative. Next item on our agenda is consent to gender approvals.
That's the water one?
That one is, you have a water works department abatement on two, yes. Don't move, Mr. Chairman. Made by Mr. Holt to approve the consent to gender, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul Rochelle. Any discussion? Hold the board. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.